Welcome to the Springford Area School District Worst Session on May 15th. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Springford Board of School Directors believes the community has the right to bring before the Board issues and concerns they may have about items on the agenda or about items in general which affect the district or their children. Because of this belief and philosophy, the Board will schedule a time at the beginning and conclusion of every meeting to have an opportunity for community members to share their concerns with the Board. At the start of the meeting, members from the public may comment on agenda items only. The school Board will move through the meeting agenda, then at the end, when prompted, there will be a time for public comment. This meeting is being filmed to be broadcast on community cable channels and online. Individuals attending to make public comments should be aware that they are being videotaped. Speakers will be asked to state their name and the area in which you reside before your comment.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. Mrs. Bickert, may we please have a roll call?
Yes. In person tonight, we have Mrs. Dierdorf, Mrs. Earl, Mrs. Hermans, Mr. Jackson, Mrs. Weingarten, and Mrs. Zazowski. On Zoom, we have Dr. Mozart, and Mr. Schaefer and Dr. Wright are both absent.
Thank you very much. As far as announcements go, the Board did meet to hold an executive session to discuss personal issues. Mr. Rizzo, anything on your end?
Nothing further.
Okay, great. So then we will move on to public to be heard on agenda items only. If you would like to speak, please approach the podium with your name, township of residence, and the agenda item for which you are speaking. Okay. So moving on to Board and Committee reports, we will start with Ms. Mangle and our student rep report.
Good evening, everyone. Today is time for May Student Rep Report, and I'm excited to share with you the events that we have going on in the district and what has been happening. So to start off with some past events, we did have some testing at both the lower elementary school levels, middle school and elementary school. ELA testing occurred from April 25th to the 27th, math from the May 1st to the 2nd, science from the 3rd to the 4th, each being two days. And the end-of-the-year jazz concert was for grades 5 through 12th, a very special opportunity given that many grades can perform together. That occurred on the 26th of April. My favorite, now I can say I've been through it, Decision Day on the 28th. Festival of the Arts, which also happened on that weekend, 28th through 29th. The middle school and high school orchestra concert on May 2nd, AP exams from May 1st to the 12th, and Impact Awards on the 3rd, which I thought was a very valuable opportunity to recognize our Springford staff and the valuable impact teachers have had on us as seniors. And to continue on, 7th grade home and school bowling event happened on the 3rd. Springford 5K run and walk also happened on the 5th, the middle school chorus concert on the 9th, art show at Limerick Elementary School on the 11th, senior prom on the 13th, which I did attend, and I can tell you it was a very nice time there. And the post-prom as well, I did leave at 4:00 a.m., so I did the entirety of the event. That also took place at Arnold's this Saturday. And coincidentally, we also had the middle school band trip to Hershey on the 13th and for orchestra, teacher appreciation on the week of May 8th, nurse appreciation on the week of May, on May 10th, and the PAC championship for boys lacrosse and boys track. We had some great wins there for our sports. And as for some upcoming events, tomorrow we do have an in-service day. We have makeup AP exam starting this week, as well as Keystone exams for our high schoolers. Additionally, the end-of-the-year band concert will be happening this Wednesday for grades 7 to 12. A senior academic recognition ceremony this Thursday on the 18th, NJHS and distinguished honors night for the 8th grade center on the 22nd, the WMCTC senior recognition ceremony on the 24th, RCTV Film Festival on the 24th, 5th and 6th grade center art show on the 24th, and senior commencement awards on the 25th. We will also be having Memorial Day on the 29th, and the last day of school for seniors will be on the 30th. Counting down the days, 15 days left. Memorial Day, oh, final exams for seniors are going to be on the 31st and then leading into June 2nd. SAT will be on June 3rd. Final exams for underclassmen will be from June 5th to June 8th. And the much-awaited graduation commencement ceremony will be on the 7th and with a rain date of June 8th. And the last day of school for all Springford students will be on the 8th, so we're coming up soon. And just a quick reminder again, as we've been giving throughout the year, for parents to continue looking on Skyward and the high school headlines, as they have very valuable information, also for students to do things over the summer, so we recommend that.
Thank you, Ms. Mangle. Yeah, and you looked like you were having a ton of fun at Arnold's the other day, so I'm really happy to hear that you enjoyed yourself. I know, Mrs. Zazowski, you were at Decision Day too.
Yes, I... Decision Day was just an awesome event, as it always is, and it's really nice to see all the different places that our students go to, and I, yeah, look forward to, we're on the, we're on the slide now, there's a lot happening all the time, so very much looking forward to it.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for Mrs. Mangle? Okay. Mr. Schaefer's not here for extracurricular, so we will move on to Ms. Earl for policy.
Yeah, the Policy Committee met on Monday, May 8th, and policy on student board representative was reviewed and approved with no changes. It'll be updated in the Board documents with no changes except for the update dated date. Pro-curricular and extracurricular activities policy and eligibility of non-resident students policies were reviewed, and there was quite a bit of discussion about those. Those will go back to the administration for their review and will come back to us in committee in June. Four digital policies were reviewed and approved by the committee and sent on to the solicitor, and they will be on the June agenda for a first reading. Our next meeting is June 12th at 6:30, and that's it.
Thank you very much. Questions for Mrs. Earl? Okay. Curriculum and Technology, Ms., I'm sorry, Dr. Wright was not leading that meeting, Dr. Mozart was doing so in her absence. Dr. Mozart, are you prepared to provide a curriculum and technology?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great.
The Curriculum and Technology Committee meeting was held on May 8th. As far as technology is concerned, Mr. Catalano provided an update regarding the summer work that is planned with the summer refresh. The 2,250 Chromebooks are scheduled to arrive the week of May 15th, so that's this week. He is planning a different deployment strategy this year for the devices, so information will be provided once all the new devices are here and prepared. Grades K and 1 will be moving to Chromebooks away from the iPad, so that way all students in grades K through 12 will be using Chromebooks. We learned that the seniors will be provided information about what they need to do to un-enroll their device from the district so that they can then keep that device and use it for personal use. The remaining devices that we approved last month are being ordered at the moment. The estimated delivery is mid-June, and that is right on schedule. The technology team is continuing with security initiatives this summer. Class length kickoff call has occurred, and the work has begun to have the conversion completed for the start of the new school year. And the technology team has also begun planning for our Google conversion, which will occur during the 2024-25 school year. As far as the curriculum portion of the meeting, we learned quite a bit about Linkit, which is in the agenda for approval. It is a data dashboard. Dr. Murray did quite a bit of research around this. She presented the information for us. The need for it stems from the fact that we use a variety of platforms right now to house data, so this solution will provide data management to be contained within one system. So this process aligns with the comprehensive goals that we have, which are focused on mathematics as well as a system of interventions. Linkit will replace the performance tracker and assessment building. It will be used as an assessment and data dashboard, intervention manager, and a PA graduation pathways, ACT 158 tracker, PSSA Keystone annual trend analysis, and a PSSA Keystone longitudinal performance comparison report. It will also help to manage the 17-plus potential data points that we currently manage in various systems. The annual cost is $66,470. It is the administration's recommendation that we do a one-year. We plan to do this for one year. It includes $15,000 in professional development. It will replace the performance tracker assessment builder, which would cost us the $22,349.18. We did look at a three-year contract, that would be $190,815. It includes three years of professional development, however, it must be paid upfront. Now, the budget that the Assistant Superintendent has created for the 2023-2024 school year includes the one year, I believe, and we can use any remaining ARPS or learning loss funding to offset the costs. Dr. Murray and a committee reviewed several different products to make this decision. 14 other Montgomery County school districts are using this product right now, and many of them were consulted during the partnership meeting at the MCIEU. And we will also have our next meeting on June 12th at 7:30 p.m.
Thank you, Dr. Mozart. And I will say, that was a very thorough report, and in addition to that, there was an update that Dr. Murray had just come across from LinkedIn, but maybe we should wait until we get to that agenda item in curriculum technology so we can update the Board and have discussion on what our options are from a pricing standpoint. Any other questions, though, for Dr. Mozart?
Yes. I think I heard if we went with a three-year contract, that would have to be paid upfront. Is that correct?
Mr. Jackson, that's the update that Dr. Murray has, that, correct? And it just came via email a few hours ago, so do you want to have this conversation now or do you want to wait till we get to the agenda item?
We can wait.
Okay. Thank you. Can we go to you for financing property?
Absolutely. Finance Committee met on May 9th, as usual. It was well-attended. There were no items from the public, there were no agenda items from the public. Meeting minutes were accepted as submitted. Some of the items discussed, oh, business liquidity is 1.1, 107 million, including 22 million. Bond proceeds to prior year was 78 million. Revenues, general, local, and state revenues are coming in as expected. Real estate transfer attacks are greater than expected and currently exceeding the budget. Note both transfer attacks and EDI are economy-sensitive. Expenditures, expenses are on par except for healthcare, we keep talking about that, which continues to run higher than expected, as previously reported. Again, self-funded healthcare insurance continues to run higher than planned, and as discussed, and we have budgeted accordingly for the 23-24 year. Food services operating in a positive territory. There was an update on the overall budget update at the point in time. Budget right now is about a $4.9 million gap, which equates to 4% tax increase, but we're still looking to manage that number a little better. And there will be two assessments on the agenda for Board approval. And that concludes my report for finance.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Questions? Okay, property?
Property, amazing, another well-attended committee meeting. My, my, my. All right, May 9th, there was an update on the Giza project. We discussed the status of the LED lighting upgrade, projects at Evans, Brook, and the 9th Grade Center completed. Oaks is underway, and the high school is next. We also discussed installation of the duck work, starting in Limerick Elementary, and the BMS of Building Management System hardware upgrade is completed with programming to remain. There's also discussion lead-in to water testing. We discussed the sampling have been completed throughout the district, and all results were under the EPA action level except for seven outlets, which were slightly higher above the 15 ppb action levels. The outlets have been taken out of service and gone through remediation protocol and have been retested, awaiting results, and we will provide those updates at the next meeting. There was also an operational update for the summer. We discussed projects in all schools. There was also discussion regarding the high school tennis court repair and what required, what was required for that, along with the 8th grade elevator repair, and that work will be done once school lets out. There was discussion with the school police and safety update. The Springford School Police and Administrators investigated S2SS tips 12 since April 11th. The Springford Police and Administrators also investigated light-speed tips 51, high-risk fire drills, evacuation drills, alley drills were completed and documented per the safe school requirements. We're waiting to hear from the JTE grant. It's about seven weeks out. Police training, officers are now completing their ACT 180 requirements for training online. TASER recertification is scheduled for June 9th. Firearms training is scheduled for June 20th. Police officers, Bill Thames will be attending the ACT 67, Basic 45 on May 15th to May 19th, and we've started the submitting process for Tim Woodhauer Solicitor. We also discussed 9th grade paving, which will occur on Green Street behind the 9th Grade Center. These will be an action item for approval, and that completes my report for property.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Questions? Dr. Wright is not here to give an MCIE report. I don't know that she would have been around for the meeting, but just in case, maybe we could put it on for next week to see if she has any updates. And with that said, we'll go to Assistant Superintendent's report.
Good evening. I just have a brief update tonight. Students have been busy over the last few weeks with PSSAs and AP exams. Starting today, students are taking the Keystone exams in Algebra I, Biology, and Literature. I was fortunate enough also to sit in on the panel of several AP research presentations, and I continue to be just incredibly impressed with the work of our students, including our Board Representative. It's certainly a reflection of the strong community that we've built here in Springford. On that note, we'd also like to recognize our staff during the time of educator appreciation. We have a tremendously hard-working staff that put our students first, and we know that our students cannot achieve all that they do without a strong support network behind them of both families and teachers. As our students are preparing for the few finals coming up in the next few weeks, please remember that live tutoring is also available for all students, and this will also be available throughout the summer. And a special shout-out to Spring City Elementary School, as they've been recognized as the 2022-23 School Wellness Checklist Champion through the Pottstown Health and Wellness. They placed first out of 27 schools. Spring City has been awarded $2,000 to use towards future wellness efforts, and Brook Elementary also participated and was awarded $350. That's my, that's my report, and I'll turn it over to Dr. G.
Good evening. As May school events are in full swing, there have been several schools across the district that have held their spring concerts. Attendance at these events was robust and plentiful. It's wonderful to see how much support from parents and friends at all of these concert events. In sports, we'd like to congratulate the boys lacrosse and track team for bringing the winning PAC championship home. And on Monday, May 1st, our high school's unified track team participated in a meet against both Daniel Boone and North Penn. The event was well-attended, and all the participants did well and enjoyed the competition. A special thanks goes out to our coaches, Mackenzie Carroll and Sue Profit, all the volunteer administrators, and finally, to the spectators and our Springford sports teams who came to cheer on our students. Finally, the 9th grade Springford 5K was held on Friday, May 5th, and this year, we welcomed 391 runners and walkers. It has been the largest turnout in run history. Lastly, senior prom was held this past Saturday and was a great success. Over 630 students were in attendance, and the excitement was palatable. Students donned their best attire and enjoyed being interviewed on the red carpet by live hosts Kelly German, John Brennan, and Bill Culp. Thank you to Erin Crew and RCTV, the high school administrators, teachers, security, and school police for your involvement in this memorable occasion. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments?
Yes. Dr. Murray, you mentioned live tutoring. How is the tutoring going so far this year?
So we have started both the on-demand tutoring as well as the scheduled learning loss tutoring. We have a couple bumps in the road, to be honest with you, but overall, I think the students who participated, I want to say we've used about 62 hours of the, of the scheduled tutoring, the learning loss tutoring, and then the on-demand is open. I want to say there's about 1,200 hits in the program so far.
And you also mentioned there was an award of $20,000.
$2,000.
I'm sorry?
$2,000.
$2,000?
Not 20. Did I see, I apologize if I said 20. $2,000.
I thought you said 20. I was going to say, I could use that money, but, okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I had a question for Dr. G about the Special Olympics coming up on the 24th. Are you still looking, do you need volunteers for that, or any kind of update with the hours?
Thank you. Yes, it begins at 9:30, will end promptly. Closing ceremonies will be at 1:30, and we have enough volunteers, we have quite a few student volunteers. You're very welcome to attend. And Mr. Rizzo will be reporting out next week on doing another plug for Special Olympics.
Anything else? Thank you. And Mr. Fitzgerald?
Just briefly, and good evening, everybody. Within the next week or two, we should be expecting from the U.S. Department of Education brand-new Title IX regulations, which will be dramatic for every school entity because two years ago, we put in a whole set of regulations that required a whole bunch of training, new policies, new notice requirements, and we're going to have to do it all over again. I would anticipate that the timeline will be that by the end of this month, we will have new regs. And for everybody's background, because Washington doesn't make statutes or modify statutes anymore, legal changes come through the regulatory process now. Much like in 2020, which was done regulatory-wise, this one is being done through rulemaking. As a result, I would expect that the administration will be getting training over the course of the summer, and probably our policies will have to be fast-tracked in August to meet what will likely be an August requirement to roll out the new changes. For the public's purpose, the, what will be the old regulations will remain in place until the new regs have an effective date, so we'll be business as usual until the changes occur sometime middle of the summer. So I'll certainly keep you guys posted of that.
Thank you.
I have a question regarding that. So would this fall under an unfunded mandate from the state, or is it kind of continuing, like, do you anticipate there being a... Like, do you anticipate there being additional cost for these new regulations? Or kind of along the same, just new model?
This will be another unfunded mandate of the federal government. And I, much like, and it's probably more profound in the area of special education, where the local effort for funding our programs is about 90% locally and only a fraction from the state or federal government. But in the situation of Title IX, there has really never been any money. And probably more problematic is the U.S. Department of Education realizes they themselves can't handle the implementation of the law. So they've put the onus on a school district. So you have to have your HR office potentially do half Title IX work or principals being trained on how to do investigations or decision-making responsibilities. The amount of time that we've seen over the last three years of districts focusing on these new mandates has been overwhelming, frankly. The law was really written for post-secondary, but they've included K through 12. And it just doesn't fit well with school systems.
Any additional questions? Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. So now we'll go through the, what will be the voting portion of our meeting for next week and see if we have any questions or additional discussion that might have stemmed out of the committees. So Section 3 Minutes, A and B, any questions or comments? Personnel, letters A through P. Finance, letters A through P.
I want to draw quick attention to Item 6, D6, PTS, Pediatric Therapeutic Services. In full disclosure, we do this every three years. Three years ago, when we did this, we put total dollar amounts for year one, two and three. Year one was a little bit more accurate than year two and three. There's no way to predict because this is based on student services. So the way we have the motion written this year, there is, we would like to enter into a three-year agreement with them. We do have a year one cost. We do not want to put year two and three in there because it's really just kind of our best guess at this point. And if you'll notice, over the last couple of years, we came forth with a lot of PTS revisions. And that was because we approved the dollar amount. And then we had to come back and continue to do that. So we will budget for what it is. It'll be built into the budget. But we do have, the rates are for 23, 24 and 25. They're all built into the agreement that Mr. Fitzgerald went through. So we'd like to approve it this way unless the board feels differently.
The contract itself actually doesn't have that number in it. The contract has a menu, and you may have seen the draft of it. It has a menu of rates for occupational therapy or speech therapy or physical therapy. The contract speaks to the fact that we are only responsible for services rendered and billed. So that will fluctuate based on our need, and it will change from time to time. The contract as was in place for the last three years, it provides flexibility to us in terms of if we are not satisfied with the services, we can look elsewhere. And obviously, we're not committed to anything other than the services provided.
Thank you. Any concerns or questions?
No. So also, and the budget's there, a 4% increase. I think we can do better than that. I think we have to do better than that for our community. And, you know, if that means that, you know, we dig into that rainy day fund of the capital reserve, it is there, and we do build it, build it up over and over and over again. I think 4% is a ridiculous amount. And I think we need to look at the impact that that has on the seniors in our community, the people on fixed incomes in our community, and understand also that 4% this year compounds and compounds and compounds. It's going to hurt your property values. It's going to hurt sales in this area. All of it comes into play. So I just want to throw that out there.
Thank you, Mrs. Allen.
We will continue to evaluate the budget as we always do in every year. But we cannot lose sight that it takes, there's a cost to operate a district. There's a cost to provide great teachers. There's a cost to provide great programs. There's a cost to provide the outstanding overall district that we have. But we will continue to evaluate the budget as we move forward.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Because you talked about this rainy day fund. And I know that I have been approached by some folks with regards to, for example, like with some neighboring school districts. Is it, and I'm going to look at Mr. Fink because I want to make sure I don't want to misspeak when I say, is it Boyer Town that is touching their quote-unquote rainy day fund, which is essentially their unassigned fund balance to come to basically what is a 0%? Is it, or what is the situation where they're touching their unassigned fund balance? Which I know that I've heard you speak about this before, which is not a recommendation that you support.
That's correct. That comes from an article that we saw in the Mercury regarding their latest report that said they were going to go zero. They were going to dip about 2.6 million, I believe it was, into their unassigned fund balance to pay for ongoing operating costs, which I would never advise doing simply because, like, how many times have you heard me say it? You kick the can. It gets heavier and heavier every time you kick it. So next year, they're going to have to, if they want to go back to par, they're going to have to go up two times that and then keep going and going until eventually they have no savings left. Or they get a big influx of cash from a referendum or something like that.
Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify what, because I heard you say cap reserve, I believe. And I just wanted to clarify, it was the unassigned fund balance that some neighboring districts choose to tap into. But to your point, I've heard you, not just in this year, but in previous years, talk about making the can heavier to the point where it's going to have an exponential impact down the road. And that's...
And that would be true if we wanted to replenish that, to bring it back to where it is. And I'm not saying that we don't want to do that. I'm not saying that we couldn't do that over time. What I am saying is that this is significant. And I'm bringing your attention to that, that I do think there are other ways to do what we need to do to make sure that we compensate our administration and our teachers and that we are running the best programs possible to keep Springford where it is. I think there are other things that we can do other than placing such a tax burden on our community. It's not everybody in our community, but there are people in our community that this will adversely impact.
So in addition to tapping into this capital reserve, which our CFO highly does not recommend, what are the other things that you think, because this is the first I've heard you say this. We met in committee, so I'm wondering what those other avenues that you suggest are that we're not doing?
Well, we still, we didn't, we did look at some of the new hires. We didn't talk at all about backfilling retirees. We didn't talk at all about programs or projects. I'm just saying that I think we have that responsibility. Now, we're not done yet, so we'll see where we land.
We go through this every year, everybody. And all of us at this table know that we've been charged as to be good stewards, not only from a financial perspective, but the decision that we make for this district as a whole. And we will continually do that. This district has grown. We have, and I'm one of the senior board members here. So I, and along with you, Ms. Zazowski, and Mr. Schaefer, wherever he's at. And we've always made the best decision for the district and our community. And I think we will continually to do that, and we will do that here. I hear what you're saying. And as I mentioned earlier, it's not over. And we will continually look and look and look. However, there is cost to run a school district. There is cost to manage your house. As I like to always say, what we do here is the same thing we do in our personal life. We manage our budgets. And we will manage our budget here in the best interest of everyone at the table and the audience and in the community.
And just to clarify, I do believe that some of those things that you referenced were discussed. For example, the backfilling of retirees. I think the conclusion we all came to, and Mrs. Lee, I see you shaking your head, is that they were all needed, that they needed to all be backfilled. And that was the discussion that was had.
I think that was a statement, not a discussion, that was made, that we needed all...
It was conversation at the table at a public meeting, yes. Any other questions or comments with regards to finance? Okay, moving on, we are going to go to property, letter A. Programming and curriculum, letter A. And I think this is where Mr. Jackson had some questions, and Dr. Murray, you have an update.
Would you like me to go first? Sure. So as I was continuing to negotiate with Linkit and we were working through the contract, I had shared at the curriculum committee that I did try and get a three-year contract, but they wanted to get all of the payment upfront. This afternoon, I did continue to work with them, receive confirmation that they will allow us to lock in a three-year contract with no price increase over the three years and allow us to pay for it annually if we want to go in that direction. So while the motion I have written here is for one year, if we want to go with a three-year contract, which I would recommend, we can lock in a three-year contract, pay it annually with no pricing increase over the three years.
And that contract, and maybe it hasn't been reviewed by the...
It has been.
It has been. All right, so we would have to modify this language.
Yes.
So the three-year value would be the 67?
67 would be the annual cost each year. So it'd be three years.
And are we...
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So with a three-year contract, it's 67 annually. With a one-year contract, it's...
It is 60. It's the same price. So they would be 67 annually each year, paid on, I believe it's July 1st. They would give us a discount if we locked in three years and paid for it all upfront. They would give us a 4% discount if we paid for it all upfront.
Which is not budgeted, which is what we talked about before, not moving forward with that.
Correct.
That committee in terms of a recommendation.
What is that value, the 4%?
I have to look it up. I don't remember off the top of my head.
Rough math. What, it's including taxes, not including taxes, or should be taxes on this?
So what we would pay for an annual cost would be just under $67,000. And then the three-year cost, if we were to pay it all upfront, would come to $190,815. No, that's included. That would be included in additional. I'd have to work it out. What is it?
And... So I'm trying to see what's, I don't see a benefit to this then. Is that the issue?
There would obviously be a cost benefit if we paid for it all upfront. That we'd get an additional discount. Which is why when we talked about it at the committee, we weren't convinced that that was the best route. My recommendation was to go for the one year. But just this year, though, you know, one of the concerns, I know the board is broad, is, and one of the things that we felt as a curriculum team is that each year, some of these costs are going up pretty drastically. So the benefit would be that they would lock in this year's price, and we would at least get that for three years. So I do think that is a benefit. We're not getting additional cost savings because then we're benefiting from being able to pay annually. But I do like the idea that that unknown of what the increase would be in the future is eliminated at least for three years.
Yes, I am a strong proponent professionally and personally for multi-year contracts. And I think I heard someone sell this, that it's tied, 14 other school districts use this?
Yes.
So what does that mean? That means that they got their product in 14 other school districts?
They are a widely-used product. They also, we are also able to get one of the consortium prices through the IU, being a member of the IU. So it is a widely-used product. And with that, we're able to do some data analysis across different districts as well.
So is this price, is this the price through the consortium or...
Yes, yes. I have gone back and forth with them quite a bit, trying to negotiate the most aggressive pricing. And I even didn't stop after our curriculum committee is still trying to push a little bit.
Is this a proprietary program or...
It's not. We looked at several other, I'm trying to look up my notes here. We did look at several other products as well. We looked at what they offered, what the product is used for. This did come up as the best product for us, that we felt would be the best option.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Could you clarify, I think in curriculum, we mentioned that there's training included.
Yes.
Is that included annually or just that first byte?
So at this point, it is. It's something that I would not want to say comfortably that the next year would go down because I think our professional development should be included. And what we want to do is make sure that the professional development is not just focused on product professional development, but that it's really looking at how we use our data teams and how we do data analysis. So yes, it is included in that.
Thank you.
So is the intent, it's a tricky question. Do we see us using this program beyond ESAR?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And what is it replacing?
So currently, we have Performance Tracker. But Performance Tracker only does one part of what this program does. There's a few different aspects of it, the data warehousing. It does in part some of the data warehousing, and it does the assessment solution piece. So it would be replacing those portions of Performance Tracker.
And it would essentially be a bigger platform. It would do more.
Correct. It does more.
Right? So we're going to save almost $23,000 by not doing the Performance Tracker anymore and by doing this.
Yes, that...
Is that $23,000 applied to this?
Yes. So the $23,000 lived in the curriculum budget. We're moving that to the Assistant Superintendent budget so that that would then be used to pay for this as well. And then any balance that I have from ESAR this next year will be used to offset the cost this year as well. So when we talked about the tutoring program and having to spend, Mr. Jackson, I think you asked me, what's the plan B? This would be our plan B to spend down the rest of the ESAR money.
And just for context, for the public, so they can understand what this is, can you just get, I know you had a slide that showed where all those data points come from. Can you just give a flavor of that?
Absolutely. We have, we have a lot of data in the district. Unfortunately, though, they're all in different warehouses. So we have P VAS, we have our Future Ready Index, we have all of these different data points. And it takes quite a bit for us, a manual lift, to go through and navigate, or you're going to different programs. And the idea behind this is that it would really collate everything so that you're using one platform for your data analysis, including some of your local assessments. So you can be using NWA map, or you can have teacher-created assessments also in here. So as you're looking at monitoring students, you can look at the whole data package instead of bouncing to different products. The other thing that this will do is look at helping, it will help us track our systems of intervention. Currently, we don't have a system for that. So we are doing that, in some cases, we're using spreadsheets. We're doing kind of homegrown, you know, homegrown programs. This will be, again, part of this system where we can then track our interventions and use that in correlation with the other data that's in there. The final piece that it does is allows us to build our assessments, building bubble sheets, building the assessment piece, which is what we're currently using Performance Tracker to, for, for a bit.
One of the questions that came up during curriculum was around the security of the data. I know you mentioned that. Can you elaborate a little?
I did. I looked into it a little bit further. We also made sure that our legal team was looking at that as well, to make sure that we're covered. I did put some information in the board memo about that, making sure that there is multiple layers of data security and redundant backups, and the data is transferred and stored for all applications through Linkit's technology stack and securely encrypted as, through the rest of transport as well. And I also had Bob Catalano take a look at that as well.
Any other questions with regards to Linkit?
I just, it just kind of brought up a question. When does the ESAR funding end? Is it 2024?
September 2024.
And at that point, this may kind of veer off a little bit, but that's when the health and safety plan will go away as well because the ESAR funding is done. Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
So can I ask, are you looking for a recommendation from the board with regards to whether we move forward with the one-year contract or do the three-year contract?
Yes, I would want the board to weigh in on that. Yes, I would want the, the board to weigh in on that. My recommendation is to go with the three-year contract, because this is not a platform that I see us using for one year and being done. There has been really good reviews from the other, from other schools that I've spoken to, so I, I see us using this long-term, so I like the idea of being able to lock in a three-year price, and I like the idea of being able to pay annually as well.
And just to clarify, because I think I had the same reaction as Mr. Jackson, if we lock in a three-year price and we pay for it, I assume we're still not paying for it all upfront, because we're not budgeting, we haven't budgeted for a three-year contract price, are we getting a discount?
No. It's, the, the, the benefit to locking in the three-year price is guaranteeing no price increase over the next couple of years.
Okay, just guarantee the no price increase, got it. Okay, so that's the benefit.
So.
Probably like an inherent discount, because we won't pay an increase in year two and three.
I tried to ask if I could just, if they could guarantee me the, the same pricing without signing a contract, and they would not, it was worth a shot.
And Mr. Fitzgerald, there's no language in there where there can be a price increase, correct, from what you remember?
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
So do we have a recommendation from at least five? I guess we would still need at least five to determine whether or not we want to change this. Are we okay with making the adjustment per administration's recommendation?
Yes.
Okay, it looks like yeses.
I think one of the valuable things about that is that another programming that you, you've brought before is, by the time, if you use it for one year, you barely get comfortable, then it's gone, or it's a crazy increased price, so this pretty much locks it down, get comfortable with it, see if it's really what it's supposed to be, and if it is, then we figure it out from there.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to conferences and workshops, A through E.
I have a question on D. Do you want to go first, since yours is C?
Yeah, C, I'm, I'm trying to understand, this is virtual, which means you're sitting on a sofa or at the office, so I'm trying to understand, what, what are we paying for?
The cost for this is the registration fee.
Okay, what are we paying for?
I suppose for the, for the course, for the presenter, for, if I'm not mistaken, I believe there's a digital platform and some of the resources that are available for it.
What's your take, Mr. Catalano, since your name's on this also?
My take on the class, sir?
No, I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand the cost of us being virtual for this conference or workshop, everybody's virtual, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand the value of $300, $600 for registration.
My take is it's a three-day, eight-hour class per day, 24 hours of education, for us to improve our skills and make us more efficient in running the numerous projects that we undertake on a day-to-day basis.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Mrs. Deardorff?
For D, who is that $440 being paid to?
It's being paid to ATICSA, which is the Title IX Association. So even, even more money going towards an unfunded mandate.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Your, your mentorship has paid, paid dividends, huh?
I can leave in peace now.
I have, I have one question, too.
Go ahead, Mrs. Zasowski.
Just really quick on B, this is, what is this AP Summer Institute?
In order for us to teach an AP course, we have to have the teacher trained, it is part of a required training. I think it's AP Music Theory, am I correct?
Yeah.
Which I remember from many years ago.
AP Summer Institute, is it just generally for AP courses?
That's, that's what they call it, that's, so technically, the other AP economics, it's also AP Summer Institute, perhaps just the way we wrote it might be a little confusing, we can change that to say AP and the course afterward, but they're overall called the Summer Institute.
Thank you. Any other questions with conferences and workshops? Moving on to Section 9, Other Business, letters A through H, although H is just a first read and not up for vote next week.
So who's doing A? I mean, we, I don't think we've done that in the past, or at least not recently. Is anybody doing that here?
If I'm not mistaken, it's not three of us, it's board members throughout our PSBA region?
That sounds familiar, is this what, Mr. Jackson, you had an objection with regards to voting on people from last year?
Yeah, it's, it's a blind vote, which we, we, in the past, we have not done it, because we don't know who the people are.
Correct, and I would encourage all of, all of us to get more involved in the organization that we are members of and the district.
Oh, okay, we'll go to Dr. Mozart in one moment, Mrs. Deardorff, could you finish?
Pays into, because kind of what I've noticed, as being a board member for the past two years, there isn't, I think as, as a board, we should require more from PSBA, as far as the resources that they provide to us and the involvement that we have with them, and kind of knowing about things like this, so I'd just encourage all of you to, in all your free time, to get a little bit more involved with PSBA, so that we are ensuring that they are representing our voice, that's all I'll say about that.
Dr. Mozart, did you have a comment with regards to this?
No, my comment is about item B, so I can wait.
My apologies. Let's make sure that there isn't still any outstanding comments or questions with regards to A, and then we'll go to Dr. Mozart for B. Okay, Dr. Mozart?
So item B involves us approving the student handbooks, and in looking through them, I noticed that there are a couple sections that may need to be revised based on some of the administrative guidelines that we've recently discussed at policy, in particular, the dressing and grooming that we just talked about last week, and I know the administrators were still working through the details, but I believe what's currently in the handbooks that we are looking to approve contains old language, so I feel like that needs to be changed before we approve it. And then I also noticed that the lunch schedules at our secondary schools still have lunchtime starting at 10:14 and 10:15, and our administrative guidelines do state that we are going to serve lunch at an appropriate time, and as I've argued in the past, I don't feel that 10:15 and 10:14 are appropriate times for adolescents to be eating.
Mr. Rizzo, do you want to address that?
Sure, so the way that our policies, our handbooks are going to be shared is digitally, so as policies are updated and administrative regulations become available, they'll be updated and they'll be able to be linked to, as I talked to Mr. Screw about that. I think we still approve the handbook as it is, and we update the policies as they move forward, because the process does take some time. Just to give you a little bit of backstory on this, code of conducts and handbooks really are to be approved annually, or at least updates to them are to be approved annually. That's not a practice that we have done here, so we're going to basically do a one-time approval, and then after that, we will be approving updates, annual updates to the handbook, to streamline the process a little bit more. So this will be our first time, kind of get it all in, and then after that, it will be updates.
Thank you.
Are they annual updates, or are they updates as the policies are updated?
The handbook would be annual updates, as policies are updated, we would, they would, the links would be updated, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Not on B, on C.
Okay, I will just say for the record before we move to C, that, again, I know that the district has evaluated lunchtimes, but I also too am not of the mindset that 10:15 is good for lunch, just to put that on record. Going on to letter C, Mrs. Zasowski.
So we struggled with this PAYS survey previously, and ended up, I think, with an opt-in option, are we, are we there on the opt-in?
The term is, is called active consent, and.
Active consent, yes.
Correct, which means opting in versus opting out. We have historically done an opt-out model. The last time we did the PAYS survey in 2021, the board switched to an opt-in model, our participation rate dropped from 90 to 95%, down to about 10 to 15% because of the opt-in piece. Quite frankly, the data that we collect from that is not terribly useful, with that low participation rate, it's not terribly useful. I did ask Mr. Fitzgerald if we were locked into that opt-in, or if there was anything legally that we could do to allow us to consider the opt-out option. The survey is available for parents through you, so they can see that and opt their child out, I don't know if Mr. Fitzgerald was able to share anything, but to your point, to your point, Mrs. Zasowski, we are currently at an opt-in, right, that's, that's our practice, unless you would want to change it as a board.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
So opt-in equals active consent, so we're still at that point, is what you're saying?
That is correct.
You said when the participation rate dropped, it was not useful information, was the information useful prior, when there was more participation?
Correct, yes.
So I would like to see us as a board go back to the way that it was. How much did it drop by?
About 80%.
So we went from?
We went from low 90% participation rate to low teens.
And the pushback from the parents, I think, is what drove us to do that, they very upset that that had been going out without any kind of.
There are a couple of pieces to it, the first piece is that some people have concerns about the questions, and then there was also a tie to PA Code that does speak to surveys that are in conjunction with outside entities doing research, using that information for data collection. Mr. Fitzgerald, I don't know if you want to opine a little further on that?
Sure, there is a provision of, of the code, not, not the statute itself, but the regulation, which speaks to a requirement that, that school entities, and this was passed, you know, 12, 14 years ago, that there would have to be this written consent for the participation in surveys conducted by entities that are not educational entities. In this case, the PCCD would fit that, that definition. I think that's interesting, and I looked at this over the weekend, that provision isn't, isn't actually supported by any statute, it's, it was, it was a regulation made by PDE a number of years ago, and from what I can gather, PDE is not actually governing or, or adhering to their own regulation. So if the board decides that they want to utilize a passive consent instead of an active consent, I think would be the best way to describe it, I suspect you will be okay. In other words, PD put the regulation in, but they're not actually following it themselves. So if there's anybody to, to, to point fingers at, it would be PDE for, for this, this regulation itself.
That was a huge concern at that point when that came up, because we were basically liable, because we weren't following the rule, and hadn't been for years, but we didn't even know it was a.
Well, I mean, I, I don't think many people spent a lot of time in that section of, of the, of the State Board of Education regs, but I, I, I don't see liability per se, I mean, it does say what it says, but if, if the regulatory body that put it into place isn't adhering to it themselves, then I'd kind of call into question the validity of it ultimately. It does say what it says, but, but I do think that there would be some level of flexibility from, at the, at the local level, should that be the decision of the board.
Just, just so, I mean, I, I do think, too, it's unfortunate that we lost all of that data, but, because it was programmings and everything else that that impacted, the loss of that, but can you just reiterate for them, Mr. Fitzgerald, for everybody at the table, what exactly it is that is said?
Just a clarifying point.
That we're not, that we're supposed to have an active consent?
The, the reg indicates that essentially a series of, of policies should be put into place by local school districts. One of those provisions include the fact that when there are surveys or research initiatives being done by agencies other than the school entity, that it would require prior written consent, and I'm paraphrasing the, the language, but generally speaking, prior written consent by a parent for that participation, that, that is what it says. That said, PDE, who initially asked for that in 2010, does not appear to be following their own reg currently.
Where do we stand relative to other school districts in the county? Are they doing opt-out, opt-in, what, what is the situation?
As far as I can tell, I, I don't know if it ever was an issue, I think what PCCD did a number of years ago, in conjunction, again, with PDE, was they said, here's a form to use, you can do one of two options, and I think the districts that have been participating over these numbers of years have just essentially gone by what PCCD had provided to the local school districts to, to implement. Now, just doing a, a, kind of a casual search, I would say probably 70% of the districts statewide do the passive approach. I would say about 30%, and again, that's a rough, rough guesstimate, would do the active approach, and it, but it's, I would say a vast majority do the, the passive.
Thank you.
And participation at some level is required in order to receive the drug and alcohol funding, is that an accurate statement?
So it's a kind of a, it's a little bit hard to define that, the way that this works is Montgomery County gets funding through this, through high participation rates, so if we are one of the districts that do not participate as much as others, we are subject to potentially have less, less funding, or we have to pay for services we might be receiving for free, that is still to be determined, we did not see that impact this last time, but the potential was there, we were warned that that could happen, but I do not believe that has happened so far, but the county actually gets funding for their participation, and then we receive benefits through the services they provide.
In the county, do we have any idea with regards to who is opting in passively versus opt-out?
Yeah, I do, yeah, so none are pass, I'm sorry, none are actively getting consent, not all schools in Montgomery County are doing the pays, but of those that are, and I would say a very high percentage of them are, but none of them are doing anything other than passive consent at this point, except for us.
Was this an issue prior to 2021, here in Springford?
It isn't, I don't think it ever came up at the board table.
It came up, but it wasn't an issue, it, I mean, for me, what are we getting by, what are we losing? I mean, we seem to be spending a lot of time on this, and I'm not sure, you know, that the juice is worth the squeeze.
Like my metaphors, huh?
I think that, in my humble opinion, the survey has been weaponized as a distraction technique from the true work of the county and the district, so if it historically really wasn't an issue as far as what the questions were versus the benefit that the district receives, that is why I'm suggesting a return back to the old way, however, I want to make it clear, because I know it, it may get misconstrued, that I'm saying it's okay to, you know, test our children without their parents' permission, that is, that is not what I am implying, I'm implying that this is valuable information, that our county seems to believe is, is a benefit, and has not been an issue before, so I would, I would recommend returning to the passive.
I think the term issue is, it's, it's been discussed before, previously, we've had bigger issues that were dealt with, as with. No, I do recall this, however, I think much of the discussion was, the parents should have a right to know what the information is, the parents should have the right to say yes or no.
And no one, I think, at this table would ever suggest that they would. And no one, I think, at this table would ever suggest that they wouldn't.
No, 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 I'm just trying to give some context. I'm going back to, you know, what are we gaining by, what are we losing?
I guess that's my question too. What are we losing? So, because I hear what you're saying, Mrs. Deardorff, which I agree that whether you go with the passive model or what, opt-in or opt-out, you're not taking away anyone's right to not take the survey, right? You still have the, as a parent, you still have the ability to decide whether or not you want your child to partake or not. So, that is, that's off the table because anyone has the right regardless of what approach is being taken. I think my question is, what are we losing? Again, assuming that what Mr. Fitzgerald is saying is accurate, which is that there is not a liability because PDE is in fact not doing things the way that they are instructed to. If you're seeing it not be a legal liability, then I guess my question is, what are we losing? And that's what I don't understand. Like, what is it that Springford is missing out on by having the approach? I mean, outside of the data, which helps to support the student services and here? Like, can someone articulate that for me? Like, what are the other districts in Montgomery County getting by doing it differently than Springford?
So, for example, whenever I came here in 2019, we started working as a district-wide cohort, as a district-wide team to look at the 2017 pays data and then the 2019 pays data whenever we got it, to identify areas where, one, we needed to bolster programming for our students. If we saw that there was a high amount of drug abuse or vaping or things like that in particular grade levels, then we could target resources where the data suggests that we should target those. So, it allows us to drill down into the data to find out how best to support students based on the trends that they self-report. Students are self-reporting this information.
But part of the other issue was no one could validate the information is what they're saying actually true. And we are presenting this like this is the only platform we have to monitor our students. And I just, I think we're talking about this, just me, is a lot over and over again. And I think we have a lot of protocols in place to protect our kids. We have a lot of protocols in place from the police department to monitor our kids, school police. So, I think there are a lot of protocols in place that looks after the kids in the district beyond this here. And my comment years ago was, I don't know what the kids, if the information is valid or they, what they're putting in there, true information, not true information. It was, as at Springford, we do these surveys.
I don't think that it's a Springford... There needs to be some context here, though. This is not a Springford survey. This is, but there needs to be some context, right? So, this was, this became an issue, if I recall, and correct me if I'm wrong, but during the height of, you know, parents just wanted more say in what was happening and not really happy with us or any of the other entities that were out there, right? So, I think that that's where this was born from, where they found out that this was happening and didn't really feel like they had that option for consent, even though the option to say no has always been there. But then...
That was exactly, it was right in the middle of all the COVID stuff and everybody's like, quit telling me to wear a mask, quit telling me to do this, quit telling me to isolate my kids and all of that. And I think it was a knee-jerk reaction, just I want some control back over myself and my children. And I think that's where it all came from.
I think you're right, Wendy. I think that's what happened. And I also think they dug in deeper than people would have otherwise about looking at the actual survey and looking at the questions. And some of the questions are pretty specific that, you know, maybe they weren't necessarily things that they wanted asked, whatever. There can be differing opinions on that, right? And that's okay. My thought is that, yeah, there's some, maybe some good information that we could get out of it. My concern, though, that I hear tonight is that we dropped, our participation in this survey dropped by 80%, which is really significant, right? And yet, our funding didn't. Is that, is that right, Mr. Rizzo? At least this one time, it has not yet?
It doesn't appear to have dropped at this time. And again, it's not necessarily about funding. It's about us being denied resources or being billed for resources, and we weren't. So, at least I'm not aware of, unless Mr. Fink offers something to the contrary, I don't believe we were billed for services we normally, we normally received for free. Correct.
And did that data, that data is what was used to influence whether you brought in an anti-vaping assembly or that sort of gauged what the focus would be on, correct? And now, we don't have a point to do that. So, you just gauge based on student issues or discipline?
Yeah, sure.
I mean, I'm just wondering where it comes from.
I mean, quite frankly, I mean, I mean, quite frankly, we don't have access to another tool. My guess, and we could certainly research that, but my guess, we'd end up having to create a tool.
I wanted to clarify too, as far as not being able to validate the results. I mean, when evidence-based research is being performed, that's all taken into account for. So, I don't know exactly how this survey, this research is being populated and the answers and the results given, but I would hope that something on this level would be evidence-based and, you know, follow the standards of research. I wouldn't want to imply that that's what's happening here.
They're answering questions, that's it.
Well, and I think Chief Boyer, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I do believe he had mentioned that he, it's unfortunate he's not here tonight, that his team has used this information for a lot of the work that they do. You want to talk about mental health and the struggles, you know, that our students are still facing, you know, coming back from the pandemic. And this right here is a way to gauge how our students are feeling and what they're doing. So, I would hesitate to paint this survey in a picture, you know, and I don't have any, I don't have any juice in this survey. I'm not getting a kickback. I have no undisclosed relationship with it, but I do believe it has been weaponized.
You are in the medical field, but go ahead.
And I think that nobody wants to take control away from anybody and how they manage their children or anything like that. And quite frankly, I don't appreciate the implication. So, I know we're kind of, kind of go, I'm sure everybody would like to wrap this up. So, I will stop and I don't know what the...
Well, we have Dr. Mozart on the line and she's been very patient. So, we can maybe go to her.
Thank you. As I sat and listened to the discussion, I wanted to reference our district's mission statement because I feel like that is always a barometer as to whether or not we need to continue this discussion. And it does say that we are charged to foster wellness in our district. If our district administration and staff is telling us that this information is valuable, I think we need to trust that it is something we need to pursue. This whole concept of passive versus active consent, I feel, is not just something that we need to consider for this particular survey, but in general, we are not taking away choice from our parents. The parents always have that option to say, no, I do not approve for my particular child to participate. But I think what has happened is, as parents, we are busy and we get a lot of emails. And clicking on the little email to say, yes, my child can participate is sometimes something that gets lost in the shuffle. And this is too important to get lost in the shuffle. So, I would propose going back to passive consent for this and any other survey that our district administration says is really important in order to foster wellness for our students.
Wellness is also defined as having a warm building when it's cold outside. So, you can, the definition is very broad.
Mr. Fitzgerald, could you just let us know if PDE does start to regulate that so that you could let the board know that maybe they shouldn't do it?
Knowing PDE, this is what they'll say. They'll say, thank you for the question and input. Please direct your question to your solicitor and he'll provide that response. Yeah, if PDE does anything about it, I'll certainly alert you. I don't expect PDE will say much of anything.
Okay. With that said, any other questions with regards to other business? Letters A through H, H is a first read.
Okay, so how about E? I had a question about E because my understanding is that it was our policy that we paid when it was a state competition.
Don't get me started on this because I have my opinion about it.
So, E is not, it's not a competition. So, this is a, we've participated in this for several years. This is coming from the high school. This is a group of students who go to a leadership conference over the summer.
We've always paid for this?
It has traditionally been paid by the Pass Town Health and Wellness Foundation.
But we're paying for it this year?
Yes, because we do not have, we have written it into the Pass Town Health and Wellness. We don't get confirmation as to whether or not we receive that until June. So, we're not sure if that would pay for it or not. So, the high school does value the students going to it. Last year, because of some of the reduction what we've gotten from Pass Town Health and Wellness, fewer students went to it. The students then come back in the fall and they lead the Unity Day that is done within the buildings. So, the high school does value this activity. They felt that it was, it was a decline in having not as many students participate last year. So, instead, they budgeted for it this year so that they can make sure it does happen. And then it did not occur a couple of years because of COVID.
So, if money does come in in June, will that be applied to offset this $4,000?
Yes.
And what about this $30 an hour? How much will that accumulate to be?
This is a piece that, with the staff member, I don't know that off the top of my head.
I think I would want to know something a little bit more definitive for next week about that because that could, that could go pretty high.
Okay.
And, and can I just add? Can you add in there that it would be that that cost would be offset if that, if that other allowance comes in?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And is this the same conference that, as a result of students participating in it, formed the Evitem Club and some of the other clubs at the high school? Because I think what you're saying is resonating something with me, that they go to the conference, they learn some skills, they bring back what they learned to the district and implement it somehow in the district. And I, my thought was like, I know, and I know that Evitem Club just had their self-care fair, but I thought that that was a result of students at some point coming back. And I just wanted to see if we had other examples of that because I do think that's worthwhile.
I can't say for sure whether or not it's specifically the Evitem Club or Resiliency Club. I think some of them may be in there, but I do know that the whole, the whole idea is that the students attend and build the leadership skills, but then they turn it around and specifically implement it towards the Unity Day. So, I'm not sure if it's one both, you know, combination.
But they're applying the skills and bringing it back to implement it broader with their student body.
Correct, that's the exact idea behind it is that it's supposed to be the student-led activity that then they come and support the whole student body with.
Thank you.
I did get, I do recall last year getting a note from one of the students who attended and they really spoke highly of it.
And this is a budgeted item? It's going to come from your budget?
No, it actually will come from the high school budget.
The high school budget?
Yes, but we did talk about it last year because, because of the Pass Town Health and Wellness, we have been getting decreased money over the last several years. So, that wasn't as large as it was, I think, pre-pandemic. And Dr. Collier really felt the impact of that. So, we talked about budgeting it ahead of time this year and working it into his building budget so that we didn't depend on something. And then it was kind of up in the air as to whether we would or wouldn't. And we want to make arrangements earlier and so forth. So, he, what I had said to him is if it's something that you really value and something that you find the importance in, then let's get it in our budget now so that we're not relying. And it's something that's that important to us, we're not relying on getting money for it.
All right. Any other questions with other business?
Check the calendar.
Sorry. Yeah, I just want to bring, I was going to bring that to your attention. So, the reason why we're asking for this revision is because when we approved the 2023-2024 calendar, it was prior to us experiencing the adjusted spring break this year. So, after experiencing it, we did get some feedback that possibly shifting it a day later would be beneficial to our families to have the Monday after instead of the Thursday before off. So, the way the new calendar, the proposal, the proposed calendar would be, students would be in session Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday before spring break. They would have Thursday off, but 12-month employees would report. And then Friday and Monday would be the district closed. We did approve the calendar, but I would, you know, after receiving all the feedback that I received, I'm likely to acquiesce and let that happen if the board supports it.
Thank you. Any other questions with other business?
I just have a very brief question about that change with the calendar because I know that a lot of people kind of were taken by surprise that they weren't going to have that day before and day after Easter off. Did we not, because I just don't, I would like to kind of get things standardized. So, I guess when we made that change for this year, we weren't anticipating the loss of that tradition of having those two days. You know, I'm just, I don't want to then have this conversation again next year.
No, I think, I think for the most part, people came to accept the adjustment. But when looking at it, they, I think people, families tended to prefer having a three-day student week, the week before the break, and then a four-day student week afterwards, instead of having a two-day week and then a five-day week. And then that day after, for those that travel, I think was, they found it beneficial. So, I think that, you know, while there are certainly opinions out there about our school calendar and where we made some changes, I think for the most part, this one seemed to be okay. We get it, we understand it, but maybe this little tweak would be helpful to us.
Does that align, does that suggest a change align with the other schools at the tech center?
Our spring break is a little bit shorter than other schools, but it does align a little bit closer because most do have that Monday off.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions with other business? All right, board comment. Public to be heard. This doesn't have to be on agenda items. If there's anyone that would like to speak, please approach the podium with your name and township of residence. Okay. Don't see anyone approaching the podium, so motion to adjourn.